And thanks to everyone for coming tonight for this Jefferson City Council election forum. Sponsored by the Jefferson Rotary Club. I'm Rick Morain and I'll be moderating the forum. Election Day is two weeks from today, not very far away. Polls are open on that day from 7:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night. Or you can vote early in person in the east lobby of the courthouse, any day Monday through Friday, from 8:00 to 4:30. The last day to do that would be Monday, November 1st, the day before the election. Jefferson voters will all vote at the community center, the rec center. Don't go to the courthouse on election day, it'll be at the rec center. You'll need an ID, like your driver's license or passport or something like that, but some official identification, the law requires that now. I've said this before, and if some of you were here, were at the elementary school last night, you've heard this before, but it's a big decision to put yourself out before your friends and neighbors to run for election, especially a local election. And anybody who has the courage to do that deserves our thanks. So win or lose, thank you guys for doing that. Somebody's gonna win, somebody's gonna lose. We'll be electing three out of these five. And voting in Jefferson City election is at large, that means you can vote for up to three candidates. I'll introduce the candidates in alphabetical order. Harry Aaron Holtz, wave at him if you would, Harry, thank you. Heath Enns. Darren Jackson. Mark Wright. And Pat Smolik. The three top vote-getters will win election. We'll hear brief, two-minute opening remarks from each candidate, and then I'll open the evening up for questions. We have only an hour, so be sure that you keep your question, ask the whole question, but keep it as short as possible, so that everybody has a chance to ask one, and the candidates all have a chance to answer it. If you want to address your question to just a single candidate, you may do that, or you may address it to everybody, that's your choice. One more thing, and I'll say this as gently as I can, this is a time for questions and not for opinions. These guys will give you opinions. There are other forums where you can state how you feel and your questions. You can come to a city council meeting, you can write a letter, anything like that. But keep your remarks to questions, if you would. And the same goes for the candidates, make your answers complete, but as concise as you can, so we can get through as many questions as we can. We drew numbers for the order of the opening remarks, which they'll give, and the order is Pat Smolik first, it's great, he's Z, that's Smolik with a Z, and he gets to go first. Heath Enns will be second. Mark Wright will be third. Harry Aaron Holtz, fourth. And Darren Jackson, fifth. When you make your remarks, let people know what you do, or what you did, if you're retired, just so they have a sense of your experience. Pat, you can take it.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. My name is Pat Smolik. I grew up in Jefferson, I graduated from high school here in 1982. After I got married, or after I went to college, my wife and I moved away from Jefferson for about 16 years, and then we moved back about 17 years ago. I've been in the agricultural industry my whole life, pretty much all aspects of that industry. We have three kids, one grandkid. My wife, Jennifer, is a teacher at the school, she's taught there about 16 years, kindergarten. And I've been on the city council for about two years, I got elected when Mayor Gordon was elected. I currently serve on the police committee, the finance committee, and the buildings committee. And the reason I'm running is, quite honestly, I've enjoyed my last two years, I liked learning how city government works. I think Jefferson is a great place to live, and I really would like to help be part of moving the town forward, and making a great place to live, and raise a family, and work, so.
Thank you, Pat. Heath?
Hello, my name's Heath Enns. I was born and raised in Storm Lake, Iowa, where I graduated from the Storm Lake High School in 2017, excuse me, 2007. I attended college at Western Iowa Tech Community College in Sioux City, Iowa, and graduated in 2009 with an associate's degree in police science. As soon as I was graduated from college, I was hired by the Jefferson Police Department here in Jefferson, immediately thereafter, after at the age of 20. I attended the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy there that fall in 2009, and graduated that same year. From 2009 to 2016, not only did I work as a full-time officer for the city of Jefferson, but I also worked as a part-time deputy sheriff for both Greene and Boone County. I've also served a few years as a firefighter for the Jefferson Volunteer Fire Department here in town. In 2015, I was promoted to sergeant for the Jefferson Police Department, the following year I was promoted to the rank of captain. And in August of 2020, after working for the city of Jefferson for 11 years, I resigned from my position as captain and accepted the position as a deputy sheriff for the Greene County Sheriff's Office where I'm currently employed. I married my wife Addison in the summer of 2017, and we welcomed our two young daughters, Mason and Piper. My wife, she currently works as a social worker for the Guthrie County Hospital. During my employment as administrator in the city of Jefferson, I worked closely with local elected officials on numerous different issues. I was a representative with Police Chief Mark Klaus, serving on the law enforcement committee, working with different mayors and councilmen during my tenure. I've also served on many different roles on the Greene County Peace Officers Association, including president and vice president. And since 2015, I've been serving as a secretary and treasurer for the association. I also served as a member and the president of the Greene County Coalition Against Domestic Abuse. The reasons I want to run is I want to ensure that our tax dollars are being utilized and distributed in the best possible way, and most importantly, responsibly. While I was an employee and administrator in the city of Jefferson, every decision I made, be it big or small, was always with the mindset of what is best for the city of Jefferson. And I want to bring that mindset with me to the city council. I also want to bring my voice of the committee to the city council meetings, to have the community input, help me make decisions on how their tax dollars are spent. I strongly believe it's the duty of a council member to be an advocate for the citizens, and this is what I intend on doing. My experience of working with the city of Jefferson, combined with this mindset, I believe would be an excellent addition to this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Heath. Excuse me. Mark?
My name is Mark Wright. I graduated from the Jefferson High School in 1978. I'm married to my wife, Janelle, she works out here at Midland Power in Jefferson, been married for 36 years. I've got two grown daughters, four grandchildren, two sons-in-laws. Two of my daughter and a son-in-law live in Oklahoma City, and I have a daughter and a son-in-law, and two granddaughters living here in Jefferson as well. I've never served on a committee before, as far as the city council. I'd like to be a part of the city council for several reasons. First and foremost of is, I'd like to see where, as Heath has mentioned in his, I'd like to see where our tax dollars are being spent. Can they be spent more wisely than what they are? If not, so be it. If so, that's, I want to be a part of being able to make that decision as well. I don't, I'm not gonna be beholden to anybody, except you people in Jefferson. I don't have any reason to be biased towards one thing or another. I do have some opinions on various things, on how the city has spent money in several ways, and I'll let that be known as those things come about. As I said, I've never served on a board before, I am an elder at the Church of Christ here in Jefferson, Iowa, have been for about the last six or seven years. And so I do understand the aspect of sitting at a round table, and being able to get along, and being able to share ideas, and try to put forth the best ones that are there at the time. Outside of that, I guess I don't really have anything else.
Thank you, Mark. Harry?
Hello, good evening, everybody. I was born in Shelby County, Iowa, in Harlan, Iowa, and grew up on a farm near Irwin, which is also in Shelby County. I graduated from high school in Irwin, and subsequent to that, I went to Iowa State University. And when I graduated from Iowa State, my career in the agricultural industry, which I'm like Pat, that's been part of my career my entire life, my career in the agricultural industry took me to Colorado, then to Nebraska, then to Kansas, and in 2001, it brought me back to Iowa, and to Jefferson. And Jefferson is now home, with my wife Carol and I. And Carol and I have three grown sons, their wives, we have seven grandchildren, and as of about three weeks ago, we are great-grandparents to a pair of twins, a girl and a boy, so exciting times abound. I'm completing my second term on the Jefferson City Council this year. And I also currently serve with the Agriculture's Clean Water Alliance, acronym on that, ACWA, which you may hear more than the full name, but they've been active in the water quality issues of the Des Moines and Raccoon River watersheds for, ever since 1999. And I've been active in that ever since I moved back to Iowa in 2001. I've served as the president of that organization for a couple of terms, in fact, I'm the chairman of that organization right now, and have been for eight years. I also recently completed my term, several as president, with our local Habitat for Humanity. And that currently serves three counties, Greene, Boone, and Guthrie. And that has been a rewarding experience also, and even though I'm not on the board there anymore, I continue to help Jeff Lamorey, who I think you probably all know, from time to time. I'm running again because, well, number one, I feel very privileged to have been able to serve two terms on the city council. And on that time, in fact, right now, I serve on several of the city committees, finance, housing, wage and benefit, streets, water, sewer, and then also, I'm a representative with the Greene County Development Corporation. I've had the opportunity to be a participant in a number of projects that the city has had, and some of them have been big projects, and I've been proud to be part of them. And the reason that I am running for a third term is, we have a lot of things out there that are in motion right now, and they're not completed, and I want to be a part of helping to get not only those completed, but there also are a good number of opportunities, and it's gonna take somebody or somebodies, like a strong council, to capture those. The city, and I think everybody would agree with this, that the city council is a very important, critical catalyst to making things happen and participating, not from start to finish, but a catalyst to get things moving, and get them moving in the right direction. As I said before, I'm proud of what we've done, but there's a lot left to do, and that's why I put my name on the ballot to run again.
Thank you, Harry. Darren?
Good evening. My name is Darren Jackson, I teach high school at Greene County High School. The subjects I teach are mostly American history and English, I direct the school plays there. Before I was on the Jefferson City Council, I served on the Grand Junction City Council. And when I lived in that community, I was also part of Horizons, which is a community betterment organization. I graduated from high school in Applington, Iowa. My mom and dad moved to Genesee, Illinois, where they ran a grain elevator until my dad passed away and my mother retired. I have two sisters, one lives in Oak Park, Illinois, with her husband and my niece, and the other one lives in St. Louis with her husband. Some of the things that I've been involved with in and around the community, I've volunteered to help with Amazing Race, I'm on the Boost Award Distribution Committee, I've been in a play that benefited the animal shelter, and I'm an elder in my church, which is First I guess if someone asked, and they have, why I've decided to rerun for this position, I have said, "I have enjoyed meeting and working with many, many people who have a strong interest in moving Jefferson forward, in and out of city government." There's a great force of people out there that want to keep Jefferson growing with the times, rather than bemoan the changes and weep about what used to be, and I want to continue to be a part of that group. I am amazed, always, at the various things I see with all the people that volunteer, and all the people that are interested in Jefferson, and do these things. I think we have to keep moving forward, but there's great things we see. I'm not sure how many towns our size, you wouldn't see, you would see vibrant businesses on the square, instead of a lot of boarded-up old businesses. And I think that that's thanks to so many volunteer organizations and people. And I have been glad to be a part of that, and I want to continue to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. It's question time, let me ask the first one, and then we'll open it up there. Several projects have been discussed for the city of Jefferson. Redo Lincoln Way from Highway 4 out to Gremlin Road, the animal shelter and dog park, upgrade the library, new fire station, upgrade the wastewater plant, improve the water plant, add more bike trails, development of the block south of the old middle school as part of the three-block project, sidewalks on West Wood Drive and Lincoln Way west of Gremlin Road. Let me ask each of you, do you have priorities for capital projects like that, or are any of these things that you would just as soon not see done? Darren, we'll start with you and come around the table.
Well, that is a huge laundry list, but I have to say, I want to, all of those things have been discussed, especially at priority meetings, and while there are different priorities I would see on them, I think that all of those are viable projects. Some of the ones that are of special interest, I believe, is the animal shelter, because we're just so close to having that completed. And also, I would like to see sidewalks on both sides of the street finished out on Chestnut out to the middle school, because there's gonna be a lot more kids walking that way. There's sidewalk, but you know, sometimes it bounces back and forth. Definitely with some of the infrastructure, the sewer plant and the wastewaterment, the thing about that is, I think that that's all moving forward, with a lot of the planning and a lot of the things that have been going on. I'm also on the library board, and once again, that's something that's been moving forward too. So I'm glad to see these things moving on, and hopefully, they're all completed, and we have new things to talk about.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with Darren, it's a long, long list. And when we met and went as a council, and went through those priority lists, there were several that kind of came to the top, and not that they were more important than others, but most likely to be able to be done, or there's an urgency to get them done. He mentioned one, the animal shelter. Yes, it appears now we're about to cross the finish line to be able to make that one happen, so that has to be towards the top of the list. The other one, and Darren mentioned this, a couple of specifics, but to develop a priority plan for our city infrastructure, which would include streets, sidewalks, sewer, and yeah, sewer and the water, that's what I was trying to think of, because that one just came up. We're in the process right now of doing an evaluation of the water plant. We've had, we've had a number of maintenance issues out there. As they reoccur, we've said, "We need to take a closer look at that," because rather than do an emergency fixes, we need to have an evaluation of where we really are, and what it will really take to make that plant viable for the next 20 to 25 years, and not for the next six months to a year. The wastewater plant, work is in the planning stages right now, as far as estimating, and that is going to be required. It's gonna be an expensive project, but it is a compliance issue, and we will be required to do that from a compliance standpoint. So I think those are the ones that really hit the top of the list. The finance committee is another one. We've just initiated a finance policy, which built on the policies that we had before, but Pat is also on that committee with me, but I'm feeling very good about that, there's a lot of work to do there, but it really is putting into place some things that will allow us to plan better, to prioritize better, where we can match up what the need is, what the priority of the need, with the ability to finance those projects. So I'm excited to start working on that, too.
Thank you. Pat?
I think the top-of-mind projects for me is obviously, you know, we're close on the animal shelter, so getting that done. Then probably the sewer and the water plant, and really understanding what that means financially to the city, and how that will impact us going forward and into the future years. Then I think the other one would be addressing the rest of our infrastructure, and building a multi-year plan to, you know, our streets, our sidewalks, where do we need new ones, where do we need to repair sidewalks? You know, that's more than a one-year deal, so get a multi-year plan. And as Harry mentioned, we have this new financial policy that I think it will, I think it will help hold the city and the council accountable for the money we spend, and give us a great roadmap going into the future, so.
Thank you. Heath?
Yeah, I agree a lot with what Pat just said. Wastewater and the water plant will be my number-one priorities, just because they're the infrastructure of the city. I want to make sure that the funding that we have is gonna take care of what we need. Obviously, nobody drives by a water plant and says how nice that looks, but it needs to be paid for, and it needs to be done. So that'd be my first priority, animal shelter. I've worked with our current one for 12 years now, and they absolutely need a new one. I don't know how they've been operating out of that small building the way they have, but that absolutely needs to be done, and I'd like to help out getting that finished. I usually use an analogy comparing the city of Jefferson to a house. I want to make sure that our furnace is up and running, and we pay for that to make sure it's going, before we buy a 75-inch TV for the living room. Wouldn't make much sense to have a big fancy TV in the living room if we can't afford to have a furnace to heat the house. So that's my stance on where that funding should be generated, everything before anything that becomes cosmetic.
Thank you. And Mark?
I would agree also, we're gonna sound a lot alike, I think, here, but anytime we have to do maintenance work, I would agree with that. I own the trucking business that I'm in, and if I can catch something early before it breaks down, I continue to run. Anytime we have an issue like they're claiming here with the water, and the sewer updates and all those, I don't have a disagreement with it, I might have, I might have an opinion on certain aspects of it. So I don't have a big disagreement with that. The dog shelter, I don't know. I gotta be honest with you, I love animals. How many dogs and cats do we actually house on a monthly basis? And I'm not saying no to a dog shelter, but I'd like to know where the money that's being spent for it, or how big the package money is for this dog shelter, which I haven't heard, I've heard numbers thrown out. The numbers I've heard are large. And I gotta tell you something, if the numbers from what I've heard are as big as they are, we have people out here in Jefferson building homes for the same money. That don't make any sense for me to go along with something like that, to put two or three dogs and cats a month up in some shelter. Yes, if we need a new one, fine, but I gotta tell you something, we need to, we need to look around, we need to see who can do it, who can do it effectively, who can do it cheaply, not in the aspect of the quality of the work, but the money. I just don't see a sense in going out here and building a Taj Mahal for a dog shelter, when we have other aspects in Greene County, and Jefferson specifically, that really need to be addressed over that. The bike trail, I don't know, I don't know a whole lot about the bike trail. I'm not opposed to a bike trail. We got several here, I know, out here that use the bike trail a lot. I just have to see how the money lays out for that, and what it is that has to be accomplished for that. That list was so long, I gotta be honest with you, I can't remember what I had for breakfast this morning, so I don't remember what's all on that list. But I probably have an opinion about some of it. But anyway, that's where I stand with the main issues, as far as the way I can see for maintenance and what's been hit here.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you all. Okay, who's got the first question?
I would like each of you to respond, if you will. At the July 27th city council meeting, council members were asked to comment on how they would feel if their daughter or granddaughter was subject to a transgender biological male using the women's locker room, which was happening at the time. Council members were advised to refrain from comment at that time. Since then, the Park and Rec Department has been researching ways to support all concerned citizens through establishing private, gender-neutral bathroom accommodations at the swimming pool. How do you feel about providing the public with private, gender-neutral bathroom facilities at the swimming pool, or elsewhere in the community if the need arises, especially where children are primarily served? Is my question.
For all the, let's take it in the reverse order. Mark, you can start off.
Okay. First of all, I'm completely against the term transgender. The Bible speaks that an individual who engages in that kind of act is an abomination. As I mentioned earlier, I'm an elder of the Church of Christ here in Jefferson. The New Testament speaks also that homosexuality, or anything of that nature, so we can get into our opinions on that if you want to. But the Bible speaks against it, stating that it is an abomination and it's a sin. And your term there, as far as, absolutely, I would be opposed to anybody going into a female restroom, shower room, or whatever, and opening themselves up to that. I'm not for that at all, I would not be for that, I wouldn't want my daughters, granddaughters, or anybody to step inside of that. The reverse is also true. I would think the same way from the female aspect as well. So that's my opinion on it. I don't, I guess I was told that that was, the legislature handles all of that, so I wouldn't be opposed to looking at that differently as well.
Okay. Heath?
I agree. I do not want my daughters inside the bathroom with transgender coming through, I'm totally against that. I understand that there is some laws that make that a little murky, and I'm sure our current sitting councilmen have been advised of that, and that's probably the last time why they didn't make any comments, because of how touchy it is. But no, I'm totally against it, if there's a way to create a third bathroom, I'd be all for that. But just to answer your question short, no, I would not be okay with my daughters in that bathroom.
Pat?
One of the, one of the reasons that people elect the city council is to make sure we're following all the current laws and ordinances. You're not gonna like my answer, but unfortunately, my personal opinion on these things really don't matter. It's, we have to follow the laws and the ordinances as they are written today. I think if we would just all take a little step back, let us work on this for a while, I think we can find a suitable solution.
Harry?
Yeah, I mean, we want all of our facilities, city-owned facilities, swimming pool being one of them, to be welcoming, to be safe, and to be convenient. And from what I know, I'm not on the rec board, but I do know that, as you indicated, they are working on things. they are working on things that I think will address these issues. Also, I also know that when we do these things, we have to be non-discriminatory, follow our ordinances and our codes, and comply with state and federal laws. And right now, that's what we are doing. But I think this issue goes beyond that in that we will do that, we will comply, but let's step back and work on the safety, the convenience, and the, just the overall welcoming of our facilities.
Okay. Darren?
So of course, the city is required to follow the law. I think it is good when citizens see a problem and they want to point it out, and I think it's also great when there are solutions. So I'd just like to say, hats off to Tracy Deal, the president of the park and rec board, and Denny Hammond that is, you know, hired to do that, because they came up with a solution. There's going to be a third bathroom built that will not be, you know, this is a transgender bathroom, it's not designated as that, and transgender people don't have to use that bathroom or changing facility. There had to be other things done. I think it was pointed out that the men's facility at the pool was lacking, too. But this could be used for anyone that wanted some more privacy, maybe a nursing mother, maybe a mother or father that have young children, but it would be a private area. And so this was good, and the, it's going to be done, it's just, once again, with laws. If you're going to change something like this, there has to be an architect involved, and Denny is speaking with architects right now. And so I think that there is a solution on its way, that at least my feeling at that parks and rec meeting was that both interested parties were okay with this solution.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Who's next?
I've got a question. My name's Dave Sherman. I know on a couple of occasions I wanted to get ahold of a councilman. Nobody's in the phone book. Good old Harry. Harry's not. Dave is.
I am.
Pat is.
I am.
Why can't you people give your phone numbers and have our city administrator put them on the top of our recycling deals that go on the refrigerator? That way, if we want to call somebody, we can. I'd like to hear whether you say yes or no.
That's a question.
Yes. 515-370...
I ain't...
370-3951. I'm telling all of you, 515-370-3951. I'm fine with your suggestion, absolutely.
I think it's a great idea. And I am in the phone book, because you called my home number. Yeah.
I'm in the phone book. That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I totally support that. Your voice is what we should be bringing to the table, and if we have something on the agenda we need to bring your guys' voice to, I need to hear it. Or if there's something you want changed, we need to hear that. I don't know if you're on social media or not, but, okay. A lot of my stuff's posted on there. My phone number's the same as Ben forever, so if you need that, I can get that to you, or this idea that you have, or even on our website for that matter, on the city's website, we can post that number. That's a very good idea.
Heath, as a peace officer, are there any practices or requirements about phone numbers for you, or is that...
It's typically not a good way to have your phone number out if you're in law enforcement, but I feel I'm so connected with the community that I do give that out.
Yeah.
Just so I can have the feedback, because ultimately, I do work for this community, so I want to hear the feedback, be it good, bad, indifferent, whatever it be. So I do hand my phone number out.
Yeah. Okay. Mark?
Yeah, no, I don't have any problem giving my phone number out and having it on the list. As a matter of fact, I think that probably leads itself towards something that I don't see a lot of, and maybe I'm just out of the loop, and it might be occurring more than I know, is I don't know how many times the people of Jefferson actually even do try to get ahold of the councilman and try to talk to them about concerns. I got to be honest with you, I guess I'd never done that, as far as that goes, and I would encourage everybody from that standpoint is to step forward and to contact them some way. I think there should be something set up to where the councilmen meet with the community at some point in time, on a regular basis, anyway.
Who's next? Didn't expect this. Okay. Tori has one.
We have touched a little bit on the library project. If you wouldn't mind updating the people here who maybe aren't clear on what you're talking about, and then I'd like to hear comments as to how far the city council should go in funding, whether that be construction of a totally new library or an addition, a second floor on what we've got now, how far the city council would stretch to fund such a community improvement project.
Let's take this, Pat, Harry, Darren, Mark, and Heath.
So update first, just to make sure everybody's clear on what the steps and goals are.
You're going to have to do that one. So at the moment, and some of this money came from the Grow Green County project. At the moment, feasibility study is in the process. There's going to be monthly meetings on this until January. The architect is meeting with a group of citizens of various, that use the library a lot, even right down to a couple of high schoolers. And so it's just some information on that. So right now, of the things that you suggested, new library, you know, adding a second floor and whatever, I think those options are on the table, except for one. I don't think I could ever vote for tearing down the part of the library that was the Carnegie part of the library, and I don't think that's even a thought. But right now, it's just the feasibility study, which is an expense in itself. But there's been nothing, you know, the actual changes, we'll have to have more discussion with city council.
Yeah, I should have started, I should have started with Darren, because he's on that library group. Pat, do you want to take a stab at that?
Yeah, I mean, I think the library's a valuable asset to the community. I would agree with Darren that the Carnegie part of that needs to stay in some form, but, you know, really until we see the numbers and give us some options and we can put it into a financial look, I can't really give you an opinion on how much the city should spend or not spend.
Harry?
Yeah, I mean, these two guys have covered it well, but we've got to have the results of that study to know what options we even have out there that make sense. But I will say this, once we've got those options and the various costs associated with them, then we can start laying a plan. I have no idea what the total dollars are here, but I do know this, on the big projects that we've done in the past, we have done everything we can to leverage our local dollars or their city dollars with grants, and we've been quite successful with that. But even in addition to that, the animal shelter is a great example of the local donors who will get behind the right kind of a project. So the city can't do everything with this, but I will tell you, it's kind of like I said before, we can be a catalyst, and I think we are, and if we're effective, we'll be a good catalyst. And if it's the right thing to do, we will find the money to do it by all of the sources out there that are available to do it. And I'd have to agree with the idea of keeping the Carnegie there, but I, that would be my personal belief. What comes out of this study may lead us to something else, but I think we'll wait for that and then make the determination.
Okay. Mark?
I got to be honest with you, I don't know anything about what's going on with the library and that sort of thing there. I guess I'm kind of, I'm not against the library, but I'm kind of surprised that I use this library here about whenever I need a library, and so I'm sure everybody's using one, but I don't know enough about what's going on with the update on that to really give an opinion on it. Cost of it, I don't know, I just don't know.
Heath?
A lot of my decisions are going to be fact-based, and I just don't have a whole lot of facts to give you a straight answer. However, with that being said, I would like, at some point, sit down with the committee there, figure out what their needs are, what options there are, and I'm all about doing whatever we can do to better that library financially, the way it's designed, however it be. So I'm very much for it, I just got to figure out the logistics behind it.
Okay. Let me throw another question out. The city has received about $140,000 a year or so from the casino directly, and then there's property tax money, and then there are Grow Green projects. Do you have an opinion on the referendum vote that's coming up in two weeks on the casino? If it's no, then all bets are off and it shuts down. If it's yes, then it continues indefinitely. Mark, you have a thought?
I've never been for the casino in Jefferson, and I'm still not. You can throw any amount of money that you want to from that casino at Jefferson, I'm not. That's part of what I want to look at, see where, if those dollars are coming here, where those dollars are going once they get into Jefferson's hands. Are they going to help the taxpayers of Jefferson, or are they funding these pet projects such as painting sidewalks and these sorts of things out here that really have no impact really on the people in Jefferson who pay the taxes? That building is set up out there, that casino is out there, I thought when they put it up, they sold it with the aspect that it would be, the monies would come back and it'd be great for Jefferson and the taxpayer. Well, I haven't seen any benefit from that, as far as I know. Maybe there is, I just don't know about it, but I know one thing, it hasn't come in to help reduce any of my taxes. So I'm against the casino all around, and there's another reason why I'm against a casino, is it has done nothing but been a place for drugs, activity out there that this community never had before. We see more weapons coming into Green County and setting out there. I don't know how many times I go by with my semi when I'm driving through there, I can look over there and I can see law enforcement setting out there at that casino. I don't think that's good. I don't think that's good for my kids here in town and grandkids. I'm just not in favor of it, no. I'm probably going to be the odd duck in the bunch, but that's my opinion on it, so.
Okay. Heath?
I think any development you're going to have in the city of Jefferson, you're going to have extra eyes, extra travel. Casino's no different. Just being in law enforcement and seeing it come into our community in 2015, was it? We did see a rise in crime in our area, different crime people that we would never deal with had we not had the casino. That being said, there's a good and a bad. Obviously, the good is the money that comes into our community, as you spoke about, the $140,000 that comes in, not to mention ours, but the surrounding communities that get a chunk of that as well. The one thing, I'm not a gambler, I don't go there, so I'm okay with it being there, I'm just not a gambler. You won't see me in there putting change down, but the one thing I would like to see is Grow Green County and how they operate. I would like to see how they move that money, what their idea is on where it should go throughout the year, and then, I know we have the competitive grant here in March is when they give that out, and then there's some money sprinkled out through the year. I would like to see that changed a little bit, specifically for the bones of the community being fed a little bit of money. Obviously, I'm going to be a little biased, because I'm in law enforcement, but law enforcement, we did not receive as much as we thought we would, or any help that we thought we would, especially taking the burden of the extra traffic in our community.
Pat?
I think the casino's been a great asset to the community, not only financially, obviously, to Green County and the other communities around, but it's been nice to have an extra hotel there, and the facilities are great, to have other venues and stuff out there, so I think it's been an asset.
Harry?
Yeah, it's been a big economic driver. I mean, we talked about what comes into the city, which is a small share of the revenue that was granted to us by the casino at the signing. And, you know, when I look back on the original use of that $140,000, I mean, we had determined by way of the police department that we absolutely had to keep our eighth officer on board, and part of that money went towards the police department and still does. So it's been a benefit there. There are other things that it's helped fund, but one thing we haven't even mentioned is the significant tax dollars that come in from the casino and the adjoining hotel, which is under different ownership, but both those together out there have been some very significant drivers for economic benefit to this city. So we, at our last council meeting, we did sign a resolution indicating that, and we adopted that resolution as a council at that last meeting, so economically, yes.
Darren?
Yeah, I guess I would personally give my full-throated support to the casino. I, once again, am not much of a gambler. I maybe have spent $50 to $200 out there, should have saved that, too, but, you know, but I, every time I walk into work at the high school, that's one of the benefits of this, you know, just boon to our community, and there's plenty of other things. When we went to the Grow Green County dinner, I was surprised at just how many communities all around are just benefiting from this without, you know, honestly, maybe putting a lot into it. Yeah, it's unfortunate when people that shouldn't be gambling are, but I think that that could be said, so do we need to close docks down? Do we need to close, you know, not open that restaurant bar that's going to go into the new hardware store? You know, people will find, I guess, their recreation wherever. My grandfather did like to bet on horses and stuff like that, but he said he didn't like to go to movies, and so this was, you know, the little bit that he spent there was there. I understand that with people, but I think the $9 million, et cetera, et cetera. Also, the casino actually gives more than they have to by law, so I do support it.
Okay.
Hi there. I'm Phyllis Crowder, and my question is concerning the Pizza Ranch. I'm just curious, it's been in remodeling stage for years, as we all know, and I am curious as to where the financing comes from that. Also, what is the status, what they aim to do with that, and is there a completion date?
Okay. Did everybody understand that question?
I guess I did. That'd be more of a question probably for the sitting councilman.
Okay. We'll start. Harry?
Yeah, I think we anticipate that that new owner is going to be in there this fall yet, and she is taking all three of those stalls. I wish Chad were here, I don't see him, but this isn't for him, I guess, it's for the council, anyway, but for detail, anyway. The project, we've used some TIF funds, we've also had grant dollars come into that, and we executed a sale agreement on the building to the new owner, so that property will transfer from the city to that new owner. In fact, it may have already, it may have already happened, yeah. The technicality of passing the deed on, I think, has probably already been done. So I don't know if that answers your question.
And the work being done in there today is the work that she's doing on the building now to get it into her use.
Well, what is her business going to be?
It's...
Tracy Bossart for the Stitch.
Stitch, yeah.
I couldn't remember the Stitch.
I couldn't either. Stitch, yeah.
Anybody else have anything to add to that?
I think those of us that, you know, the city probably shouldn't be in the real estate business, but if we weren't, and we looked at, you know, some of these buildings on the square, and we're getting out of it, it'd be like, you know, when you start to lose your buildings, it's like starting to lose your teeth, and there would just be those empty spaces, and then the next one, you know, falls apart, because those walls aren't necessarily made for an outside wall, and I think that it would... And I think that it would, it would just be what a lot of towns are in. How do we get our old buildings torn down rather than what businesses are we going to get into these old buildings?
I agree with Darren. I mean, as I said before, the city can be a catalyst, and I think there are times when we need to be a catalyst because if we aren't, nothing is going to happen. But hopefully, we can get movement to the point where this can be handed off. And in all of the buildings that we've taken the jump of faith, all of those buildings have transferred to new owners, and there's activity on them right now, be it Tracy finishing her building. There's going to be a lot of activity with upstairs apartments. These things just wouldn't have happened unless we did something to move the ball forward with it.
Is the city financially involved?
Please come up to the mic, please, so then they can hear you. Sorry, we're here beforehand, but we need to have everybody speak at the mic.
I just wanted to know if, is the city involved in the upstairs apartments? Are there any money coming out of our coffers?
There would be some, yes. But we also, we're just awarded a grant, historic grant, and yes. If you're going to ask me how many dollars totally, Denny, I don't know, but I can tell you, we can get you that.
How about the VFW? Me and you have had conversations about that. Moved anything on that?
Yes, the VFW.
Figured out a way to help them?
Yeah, the VFW building? Yes. Yes, we have. I don't know how much of this is out for publication, but yes, we want to help them get a new roof put on that building because we now own two adjacent buildings that we would hope to get roofs on so we can get new owners into those buildings. And the negotiations have been, if we help with the roof as the city, then what about the facade of the VFW building? Can you upgrade that? Would you be willing to look at that to a more historic-type storefront? And they said yes. So again, there's, we got it rolling, and now I think we're getting real close to having a apartment.
How about the Forge and Gravitate? There's no activity in there, what's going to happen there?
So, you know, I'm not privileged to all the business stuff. I think Gravitate is, you know, is what a new business would do, I think.
It's sitting there empty.
Right. And there, you know, sometimes it's a lot of nothing ventured, nothing gained. So, I mean, sometimes you're, but those are companies that they're doing their own thing, and they've, you know, they got some help to fix those up. But once again, we don't want, just like the VFW building, we don't want that to fall in on itself because then that starts to hurt other buildings. I'm, I wish they were maybe doing a little bit stronger than they are, but, you know, like anything, we hope that that moves forward. I know with the Forge, they changed ownership and then, so that kind of lost a little bit of that continuing on.
I still think long-term, there's a real opportunity there though, Denny, with the Career Academy that we've got. I mean, that connection with what could happen down at the Forge, keep some of our young people local and employed in high-paying jobs in this community, boy, I think it was worth the risk, I really do. I hope it ends different than it is today, and I think it will, I really do. But sometimes those things have to happen in order to make the things happen down the road that make things better for this community long-term rather than for the next six months or year.
Father time is undefeated, and so if we want this town to continue, we're going to have to have young families and young people move in. Otherwise, it'll be like so many towns, you know, like the town I grew up in, which is, you know, there's nothing there anymore, there's not even a grocery store. And they, when I was a kid, that was a vibrant community, but they just didn't do the things to keep young people around.
Can we ask questions?
Of?
Of the sitting councilman.
Sure, they can ask you, you bet.
Okay, my question would be kind of going along with what Denny stated is, we've got a lot of new storefronts out here in town. Out of all the new storefronts that are here in town, how many are still empty? Maybe I should put it this way, out of, how many storefronts has Jefferson come in and helped to renovate? And I'm not totally against what you're saying, I agree. Buildings don't, empty spots in a square is not ideal. But out of the money that the city has spent or helped to spend to remodel the fronts of these stores, how many have we done and how many are currently now filled? And how long's it been since that's happened?
Well, some of these buildings were in pretty dilapidated condition, so it took a lot of money.
I agree.
Even to get a roof back on, shore up the foundations, et cetera.
I agree. And now that we've done that, what's inside of them?
Well, we've got sensibly chic over there on one side of the square.
Okay.
We just transferred ownership of the Centennial Building to a group, and that's going to get finished out.
Okay, so is that a done deal? You said it's transferred ownership?
Yes, it is, absolutely.
So is somebody moving in there?
Yes, they are.
The Stitch is moving into the...
And Stitch is moving into the old Pizza Ranch.
Funky Zebra?
Funky Zebra's brand new, and they're in business over there right now.
Okay, there's four.
The hardware store will be a restaurant this next fall.
We're going to help to pay for that, right?
With a lot of the grant money and things like that, yeah.
Okay. I've got a, I've got a empty lot out where I live, and I'd like to put up a building out there so I can put my semi in and work on my semi out of the weather. Can I get a grant to get the city to help me on that?
You'll have to start the, I mean, there's a process, right.
Do these people, would they be for that? I don't think these people would want to put a building up for me.
Well, I'm not even sure that's available. So, yeah. But if you want to start the process, we'd be open to talk to you.
But that's my point.
What's that?
Is we're in the real estate business, we're remodeling these places, they're sitting empty. I was told the last time when I went in, when I came in on social media, which I'm not on social media, so I had ears, but I was told at that time that when I talked about trying to make Jefferson great again, and I think we, I think in some ways you can, but we've got Amazon and Walmart and all these other big stores, we are not going to be like we used to be. I was told that Jefferson has never been greater than it is right now. I got to tell you something. I remember every single one of these store buildings downtown Jefferson, full. They weren't empty. You could go from one building right down and all the way around the square, every single one of those buildings was filled. Is that going to happen today? Probably not. So how much money are we willing to put into the facade of a building and let it sit there, and then the interior of it sit empty?
That's not the point of doing the facade, it's to attract.
I know, that's not the point of doing the facade.
The business is...
But it's our money being spent that is sitting there on a facade of a building, and how is the taxpayer getting a benefit from their dollars?
We've got to attract new businesses into those buildings, and they're going to be a lot different than the businesses that were there.
That's not the answer to my question. I said, how is the taxpayer going to benefit from that facade sitting there that's, that building's sitting there empty and has for years?
If the building sits empty, there's not going to be a benefit. But that's not, that's not what we're about, and that's not what we're up to as a city. It's getting people back in those buildings, and those businesses are going to be different than the businesses that left them in the first place.
Okay. We just, we just got done talking about a building that came in and now they're gone. They changed hands, the Forge down there.
Mark, did you have a question? Is this...
Nah, just debating. I thought that's what this was.
No, this is a question for you guys. If you, people can ask you questions, then you can ask them questions. But it isn't really a place to make a statement, it's a question for them.
All right, withdrawn question.
No, did you get an answer?
I don't, I was still trying to keep, trying to...
Well, I guess you've said that, you know, you prefer, I do too, I would prefer that all those buildings be full, but without the things that city council and of course other volunteers and stuff, how many would you prefer to be empty? Because that's what they would be, a lot of them.
Yeah. What do you mean?
That without some of this help and without some of this community development and without volunteers and things like that, there'd be a heck of a lot more of them empty than are full right now.
Really? We've got, what do we have? We've got two minutes. Unless somebody has a question, we'll take closing statements and call it a night. Okay, let's do the reverse order on the closing statements. Darren?
So I think as I've said in this before that, you know, there's lots of good people and people that are, I think everyone in here is interested in the future of Jefferson and things like that, but we're really only just placeholders that to, a big thing is to get entrepreneurs here and especially young families. So then there's the next generation and things like that. Otherwise, you know, a lot of this is spinning its wheels, and that's why I'm involved with this. And also, I think just to be a part of all of the good volunteers and the good people that are a part of this community.
Thank you. Harry?
Yeah, I, I mean, if I'm elected, I'll, I will plan to continually be actively involved in the ongoing effort to keep moving this city forward because I think the forward motion is where we are right now. But we can't take our foot off the gas, we can't take our foot off the gas pedal. I'm committed to help enable, recognize, and in any way that I can, reward our dedicated city workers, and Darren beat me to the punch on this one, volunteers. And when I, we talked about some of the storefront, the Centennial Building, the work that went on in a number of these buildings, yeah, it costs money, but I will tell you, there were some dedicated volunteers involved in those projects too. And it's because of that and the donors and what I think is a forward-thinking city and a city council right now, I want to be part of that action, and I really do believe that we can make this city better than what it is today.
Mark?
Well, as I said in my opening statement, I'm not going to be beholden to anybody but the people that pay the taxes, and that's the people out here that are sitting there as well as those that are possibly watching at home. I think we need to be in better communication with the people in Jefferson on how we are spending our money. If it's doing these buildings like they are, the communication is, in my opinion, has not been there. I don't think the average person understands the monies that are being spent, and then when we do see the monies that are being spent, but yet the building stays empty, why wouldn't we have questions on that? So I just want to reaffirm that I'm going to be here for the person that pays the taxes. I'm going to listen to their issues that they may have. I hope they would bring them to me, and I hope they'd bring them to everybody. But that's who we have to ultimately be beholden to is the people who pay the taxes.
Thank you. Heath?
All of these guys took the words out of their mouth on several different issues. I would just like to add one thing, along with moving the city of Jefferson forward, along with being a good steward of tax dollars, I want to make the city of Jefferson as an employer a desirable place to work as well. The city of Jefferson has as many employees on their payroll, and I believe it's a much better use of tax dollars to keep these experienced and knowledgeable employees happy by providing them competitive wages and benefits. Thank you.
Pat?
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to thank everybody who showed up tonight. I've talked to several of you guys over the last few years that are sitting out there, and I would encourage everybody to talk to your city councilman. You know, we have an open forum at the beginning of the council meeting. We do like to hear from you guys. I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on, and it's good to hear opinions, so please give those. I guess for me personally, I've enjoyed being on the council. I think Jefferson's a great place to live, and I'd like to have the opportunity to keep moving it forward, so, thank you.
Thank you all. Stimulating discussion, and we're going to be in good hands no matter who's elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.